March 29th at 9:00 p.m.
I call this Storm Lake City Council meeting of February 17, 2025 to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda, is there any consideration of changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Moved by councilperson McKean.
Second.
Seconded by councilperson Ramos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That will carry, the agenda has been set. Any disclosure by any city council members? Hearing none, then we will move on to hear the public. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on a non-agenda item? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments, council?
I do, just on the Carol refuse. Can we pull it?
Can pull it. Yeah, that's, we'll pull that and we'll move that just really.
Yeah, we'll put it in the, yeah, we'll put it right on the first.
Okay, first item, okay. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing the Carol refuse piece and we'll talk about that in our regular business.
So moved.
Moved by councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Seconded by councilperson McKean. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That will carry. All right, so we will move down to new business and we'll, we'll talk about the Carol refuse.
Just following up from the last, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, has the, has it gotten better? Still hydraulic stuff leaking all over the streets, or?
Honorable mayor and council, we'll have Mr. Olson come up here and we'll let you know that we have, we have time to time issued citations. I think that I have had less complaints in the last year than I've had in previous years, so if we're gonna gauge, I guess are they doing better? That would be how I would gauge it, I just haven't had the number of responses, our complaints that, that we've had in the past. Mr. Olson can also share with you if he's received any complaints and also explain any citations that we've, have provided them or given them.
We have not issued any violations at this point, so I had a couple of complaints, but they seem to have taken care of it, so as long as it becomes bad like it was, we'll start writing, issuing citations again to try and get corrective action taken care of.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Any other comments on? All right, we'll need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second.
Perfect. First by councilperson McKean, second by councilperson Martinez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That will carry. All right, the next item on the agenda is a motion to set a public hearing for the fiscal year 2026-2030 proposed capital improvement plan. We got Tyler there to present.
Thank you, honorable mayor pro tem and city council. The original publication did not make the paper in time to hold the public hearing that was originally scheduled for tonight. Therefore, this agenda item will set a public hearing for the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2026-2030 for March 3rd at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. The cost of this item is the publication, we did not send the publication out originally as planned, so there's no cost to the last item. Staff's recommendation is set the public hearing for fiscal year 2026 to 2030, capital improvement plan, public hearing for March 3rd at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gibbons? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve setting a public hearing for the fiscal year 2026-2030 proposed capital improvement plan for March 3rd, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion by councilperson Ramos, seconded by councilperson Martinez. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That will carry. Okay, the next item is a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Bolton and Mink for documented catex on the airport apron expansion project. Mr. Gibbons is here to present us again.
Thank you again. In this year's fiscal budget, the Storm Lake Airport is designing the apron expansion project and working with the FAA on a go letter for issuance. Prior to issuance of the go letter for this project, the FAA has requested the airport conduct, conduct a documented catex for the project. A catex covers a full environmental review of the proposed project, specifically potential impacts to biotic resources, wetlands, and cultural resources. Bolton Mink is currently operating under a five-year professional service contract for the airport, of which the apron project is outlined. We have conducted a comparative analysis for the environmental work and found the proposed work to be fair and reasonable. This work order will be an extension of the five-year professional service agreement and will not exceed $20,900, of which 90% will be funded by the FAA and 10% from local office of sales tax as a local match. Staff's recommendation is to approve the professional service agreement with Bolton and Mink for the documented catex on the airport apron expansion project. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Bolton Mink for documented catex on the airport apron expansion project.
So moved, excuse me.
Moved by councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Seconded by councilperson McKean. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That will carry. All right, moving to the next item. Do we have any city council requested items or city council updates? Navratil, Ms. Navratil, do you have anything?
Thank you, honorable mayor and council, most, right now that we have on our list is electric bikes that we will be discussing after we get through our budget.
Yeah, true. It will be nice and warm next week, though.
For sure. All right, if nothing else, we'll move on to the next item, which is fiscal year 2025-2026 budget work session.
Yeah, honorable mayor and council, we're just gonna go for the remainder of our meeting today, we're gonna be down at the table. We also have a work session, a brief work session after the budget, so that Mr. Olson will just provide us the information at the table at the same time. It kinda goes hand in hand with, with our, with our budget discussion, so. And city clerk Martinez has hard copies. We're doing enterprise work session, honorable mayor and council, water, wastewater, and stormwater funds. And then we'll go right into the stormwater ordinance. Oh, landfill, I forgot about the landfill. We tried to break up our enterprise fund from our general fund budget, so we're not overly, I guess, have too much information coming at one time. I do wanna caution, though, on our March 3rd meeting is going to be general fund and we have some pretty, pretty good discussions that we're gonna have to have, so we'll probably plan on being here a little bit longer than definitely tonight.
Look forward to it.
I, I, I'm glad you do, thank you. All right, so. All right, Mr. Gibbons, kick us off.
Okay, so the, the first enterprise fund is gonna be the water fund. So just remember that enterprise funds are self-supporting funds, which account for goods and services, which are charged at a user fee and charged and paid in exchange for the utility service specifically, in this case it's gonna be water. There are four divisions within the, the water department, so we have our administration portion, we have our water plant, distribution, and water meters, and those three kinda work collectively together, so they're, they're really formed maybe one. The water fund or the operation that the water plant are kinda outlined there, talking about the number of wells, so when we're doing our well projects, those are changing, those number, number of wells from one year to another. Obviously, our water towers are going to be changing once we get the completion of Tower Five. Clear wells, we have two of them, number, amount of miles of pipe, that'll expand as basically the city expands as well, so. Things to keep into consideration. We service roughly 4,300 water meters in a month, so we service approximately our service area, estimation is just under 15,000 in population is what the water service. So, some factors affecting this year, just to, to be aware of, so inflation, obviously, across the board for all, all departments, even you're seeing it at home, those types of things, as well as the same for the water fund. We're also seeing an increase in demand for the water, this has been going on, causing several of our water conservation concerns throughout the, the summer. Another one that we're looking into is we've seen an increased number of issues with the software and hardware, which is the operating system for SCADA, that basically is the guts of operating the plant, but I'm wrong. It is the guts of operating the plant, but it is a hardware software. So when we see issues with the hardware software, they're unable to see, for example, a well or a tower or any of those other items, it's a major component within the infrastructure of the water plant and the creation and distribution of the water to the residents. So we've seen an increased issue with that, we're still working with both players involved, Thompson and ISG, to see what's going on with those and try to get a remedy in place for those.
So can I ask, how old is the software and hardware that you're currently using? Is it outdated?
The, the hardware itself is 2018, which was slated to be replaced during this fiscal year budget, but when we were looking at the project and the scope of the project, it's kind of expanding due to other issues being caused other than just hardware, the software itself and the way that the networking occurs, so the network mapping is being addressed at this time, too. For this year, there, we had the issuance of four water revenue bonds, so you'll see an increase in debt service for those four wa, water revenue bonds. We also had an unexpected HVAC replacement on the line of storage building resulting in about $11,404. Something that may carry over into next year is the completion of well 2022 into fiscal year 2026, which you may see in here. Just, it happens every year, you start a project, not fully, get fully completed by June 30th and stamped and potentially completed, so it'll carry over into your next fiscal year, so we account for that within the budgets. Are there any questions about affecting this year or technical questions of the plant?
We got the technical guy and the numbers guy here. And the engineer here.
How would you assess the health and stability of our water mains?
Average. There, there are a lot of old mains, but there are a lot of new mains out there, too, so we're kind of probably right in the middle.
Was there a break today?
Yep, yep, so, so far, every break besides one or two have all been four inch cast. It's, they're the shallow remains that we've come across and just no moisture in the ground, so that area's just going straight down and it's taking a toll on them.
And then moving on to revenues, the water fund is operating under good financial health, maintaining the council desired 40% fund balance. So that 40% fund balance is 40% of the annual operating cost to run the water operations. So we try to, the council's desire is 40% fund balance. For fiscal year 24-25, it's anticipated to be 3.3 million in, in ending fund balance, with that carryover balance projected to be for that well 22 completion of the project. Estimated operating revenue for the next fiscal year is roughly 6.7 million, which includes a 10% increase in our water rates as recommended by the project cost and discussion with the city's financial advisor. So when we look at work with those, we look at all the projects that we have going out, that's our five-year CIP plan and then actually beyond that as well, as well as how much growth we see within the water fund for servicing, like catering, development, and those other types of items, outside growth from the communities that we serve that are not actually part of city limits as well, and all of those outside contracts. So the recommendation based on the cost of things moving forward, the recommendation is a 10% increase on this year, which would result in roughly $3.31 per resident, for residential users using 600 cubic feet. Now, your use for residential location is going to vary, obviously, based upon the number of people that you have in there. We use 600 kind of just as your base for a family of four. So you'll have a lot that'll be a lot less and then you'll have several that'll be more, so we just try to target that, that middle median consumption of 600. On average, 30 and a half percent of the revenue is generated by water residential users, so the remaining almost 70% comes from the commercial and industrial side.
Is there an increase with the, for the commercial side?
That'll be, yep.
Same?
Yep. The, the exact dollar amount won't be the same, just because their rates are tiered based on consumption. But it will be the, the 10% as well. So, the city of Ames actually does a great study every year and kinda takes everybody or all participating municipalities that have a population of over 10,000 people and they conduct a statewide survey and kinda rank each location on where you at, based on several different factors of how much consumption you have, what your base fees are, and what your projected rate increases are. So, they don't have the 2024 report out yet, but they do have the 2023 report. And this ranks Storm Lake in the bottom third for population 10,000 or more. The current median is at 35.41, which is $4.47 more than the city's current rate, and a $1.16 less than the proposed rate, so even with a 10% increase, we won't even be at the median rate yet, based on their study of 10, population 10,000 or more. So, the 10% is within line of the industry and what the municipalities of 10,000 plus population are targeting. For any additional fees, so the water user fees are all set by ordinance and require the three readings and approval by council. But the additional fees that are included in the fee resolution, those are our water shut-off fees, turn-on fees, those are our deposit fees, those types of items, those are all set by fee resolution. Last year, we increased the water turn-on, turn-off fee to $30, so this year we don't have any recommended increases. The bulk water salesman is still, still trying to catch the interest of the contractors. They're still wanting to just have us open a hydrant for them and just do as they see fit, so we're still trying to encourage that. We're not really seeing the volume use off of it right now, but we expect that the more and more that, that's, that's the solution and people will be able to use it more and more often, so.
When you, when we raised the fee to $30 last year, what was it raised from? What had it been?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you.
Yep.
When we, when they are wanting us to like open a firehead, are we doing that or are we forcing them to use?
We really try not to. We really force the water salesman, there are some situations that, you know, we'll hook on a, a meter and they still get charged. But we just took a meter to a hydrant, but we really try not to.
It allows more control, especially in your water conservation time, if you are seeing the high demand that you're seeing, plus you're running into issues with serving the community, you have the control at the water salesman to turn it off, limit it, whatever you have to do on a day-to-day basis, so the users, primary users of it are actually construction users outside of city limits, especially of recent years. They're wanting to get water here to take two projects outside of city limits. It'll just allow a lot more internal controls. For fiscal year 25-26 budget adjustments, insurance rates are expected to increase 10.2% for property insurance, workers' confidence sharing, and liability insurance. The budget does include a 2.5% increase for full-time employees and a 9.3, .03% increase in employee insurance. And adjustments have been made to the operational, and what we really targeted this year were the discretionary, the nondiscretional items within the operating budget. So like things like chemicals, things like utilities, those are kind of out of our control. So we really targeted those items within the operating budget that are actually under our control and really narrow that down to what's needed and where those dollars are being allocated and what they're being allocated for. So that's how we get to this year's budget. Total revenues, 6.707, and total expenses, 6.705, all based upon approving that 10% rate increase.
So the 10% increase on insurance rates, is that just the industry standard or is that due to claims?
That, that, this one for the property insurance is, is strictly because of just the industry standard. They took a look at it, it's a hard one because the renewal period is actually April to April, so we're actually targeting a number now for next April. We don't even know this year's increase, to be able to justify next year's increase, so we talked to the experts and they help us. And this is kinda what the industry's looking like and this is what we project basically 14 to 15 months out. Now, that 9.03% increase for employee insurance, that is related to claims and increased number of claims. So, overall personnel is 20% of the total operating expense. Operations and maintenance, which does include those nondiscretionary items, are 43%. About a million dollars of that is chemicals alone. Debt service, as mentioned, because of the four new revenue bonds, has increased to just over a million dollars. And then your capital expenses, big one is the tower reco, coating, with a total is 22% of the overall budget.
Honorable, honorable mayor pro tem and council, just a couple other items that I wanted to bring to the forefront here, obviously, water conservation is gonna be one that we're gonna have to talk about. I can't say that the snow that we receive is actually what you would call a wet snow, and so we're still dry, we're still in a drought. You know, we would be looking, and we've talked internally, that we would probably starting water conservation right when spring comes in, because there just isn't, I mean, there has not been any moisture, there wasn't any moisture last year, year before, I mean, we, we see the trend. So, that's gonna, gonna come to you really soon as spring hits. And the second thing is, there's some state legislation out there, I know that we've been talking about the new water plant, we're planning for a new water plant, your 10% rate increase that you're considering is for the new water plant, and so, looking at that state legislation, there's a piece in there that says that you can only bond for 80% of your project, meaning that you have to have 20% of other funding set aside to assist with that project. Well, we're looking at a hundred million dollar plant, 20 million of it would have to come from other funds, well, our other funds are rates, so it would definitely be an interesting factor, I guess, if that does pass. So it's, it's one that we've been watching and following because it is gonna be one for our water treatment plan or any future bonds that we'll have to collect, we'll have to plan for. And I don't know where you're gonna get your 20 million in, in the next few years.
Tyler, this is Mayor Porche, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On the operations and management, it was 43% this time, do you know what that percentage was on the last budget? By any chance?
Not off the top of my head. I can get it for you here real quick.
I just.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe the O and M really increased that much. I think it was about the same, the percentage was probably higher last year, just simply because your debt service wasn't as high with the four additional revenue bonds. But the actual dollar amount, I, I believe, actually decreased.
Okay.
Overall.
That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Yep.
So I was going to go back to the water conservation, so when we are, discuss that starting in the spring, I would like the council to receive a good idea of what we're gonna do to get people to start paying attention to our water conservation efforts, whether it's education, whether that means partnering with the community college, with the BBU, but somehow we have to get word out that residents really need to help us to conserve our water. And I think that requires an educational program, and I think councilperson Martinez has brought that up several times.
Okay, the net, the next enterprise fund is the sewer fund, very similar to the water fund. It's user fees in exchange for the services provided. The sewer fund also has administration, wastewater, and collection. And again, the wastewater and the collection is kind of consolidated into one department and you have your average influent, effluent, obviously, the increased rain affect the daily flows as well. The amount of sludge that's removed from the plant increased significantly from last year to this year. The number of lift stations remain the same and we're working on, obviously, capital projects to remedy some of those, but just kinda tie some of those projects back to specifically what they address in each one of these. Sewer fund, as well as operating at the council desired, 40% projected ending balance of 3.5 million. Total revenues are projected at 5.2 million, this does include a 7% increase in sewer rates. A 7% increase would result in an average residential bill increasing $3.56 per month, and again, that's at a 600 cubic feet use.
And the 7% also applies to commercial?
Yes, it does.
And honorable mayor and council, honorable mayor pro tem, and honorable mayor who's on the, on the phone, too, that we're not requesting that, that 7% change. So typically, we've tried to keep our water and wastewater rates similar, but, you know, we're, are planning, we're in different plans. we're, are planning, we're in different planning stages. So the ten percent for water and we're recommending this continually, the seven percent for the sewer fund.
Going back to some legislation that's out there too, when we're talking about how they're looking at an eighty, twenty percent match on bonding capacity, they're also looking at a study bill right now that would limit rate increases to two percent, no more than two percent, or, excuse me, no more than two percent, or the CPI, whichever is lower, is what they're looking at right now. So we're looking at a ten percent increase in water. If they would restrict that to two percent, we wouldn't be able to get even close to that median bill for our population. So we're trying to address some of these needs to get within that median bill while we still potentially have time. And also look at, looking toward the future at that twenty percent, how do you match it at the twenty percent for any bonds? So if they're doing it on sewer side, they can do it on waterside, anything. Again, just referencing back to that CAME study, I do like that study. So the storm like average bill is forty-seven, fifty-eight per month. Your sewer is always going to be a little bit more than your water for an average bill just because the cost for service is a little bit higher as well as the water includes a flat fee for the first fifteen hundred gallons of water used. So that's not taken into consideration when you have sewer. So that's, that's why you're gonna see it be just a little bit higher. This rates the city in the middle pack, middle of the packs, so right around the median. The median ra, rate is forty-three oh-three, according to the twenty twenty-three study.
When, is that the, the study, isn't that the one you send a graph out?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that does come out.
Yeah, generally, we, I think we put it up on the screen in previous years just because it, it kind of shows those trends for the different communities as well. But they just haven't come out with twenty twenty-four yet. Once they have that, we definitely share that information.
I think the public needs to see that as well.
Mm-hmm.
It says here that you increased the industrial FOG. You called it FOG or you call it FOG?
FOG, yeah.
All right. Last year, how much did we increase it by last year? We know?
We weren't charging for it previously, so now we are.
Okay.
Not that I want to, but I mean, with them, maybe doing that cap of two percent, I mean, should we look at upping this to ten percent rather than seven? Or, I mean, just to get ahead? I mean, I don't want to, but-
No, Honorable Mayor Council and Honorable Mayor Pro Tem. That was actually because the Senate bill came out on, I think it was like late Thursday or Friday. That was actually a discussion that we wanted to have with you. Do we want to look at increasing it a little bit right now so that we can get ahead of potentially what it is? Right now, it's just a study Senate bill, so it may not go anywhere, or it may go somewhere. You never know.
Do you know the number of the bill?
Eleven seventeen.
Yes, I do.
Senate, Senate Study Bill, SSB eleven seventeen. Sometimes it's a roller coaster ride, you never know what you're gonna see when you wake up in the morning with the bills. So, yeah, definitely, that's something to consider. And again, we don't have to have the decision today because we're gonna come back and have that, but it's definitely something for all of you to, to look at and-
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, because we're so far down that, I mean, we'd never be able to get out if they do that.
So similar to, to water, the adjustments are included in there for the insurance, two and a half percent for full-time employees and the employee insurance as well as chemicals and other operating. Overall budget, estimated revenues is five point two million. With expenses at five point two-one million, so minor increase there. Personnel, again, right around the twenty-one percent. O and M, one point seven is thirty-three percent. And again, that's about nine, no, they're kind of not as much.
Not as much, they're a lot lower on that side.
Yeah, but they have, they have more of the non-discretionary for like utilities with the blow, but hopefully, the blower project and those other items will help address some of those non-discretionary costs and hopefully drive those down as well. Debt service, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, eleven percent, that's about the same. And your capital projects of one point eight million is thirty-five percent of the operating Any question, other questions on the sewer?
How it works.
Stormwater fund is the next enterprise fund. Again, stormwater includes administration and collections. This is also where your street cleaning comes from, the street sweeping projects. So the street crew, rookies crew kind of handle all of that. Both the central business district were done ten total times in twenty twenty-four. All the streets were done six times though in twenty twenty-four, three times in the spring, three times in the fall. The number of intakes kind of remained the same, the water quality controls remained the same from last year as well. Revenues for the, for the stormwater fund are just over the forty percent fund balance, but this fund has been spending more than it's been taking in for the last few years in spending that fund balance down. The fund balance is projected to be two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and on a five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar expense, you're like forty-one percent projected for the end of this year. So right now, we're looking at about a fifty thousand dollar loss in stormwater. So it's recommended that the city council consider your measuring unit of stormwater, which is, which is classified as an equivalent residential unit or ERU. Basically, what you take is a square footage of a residential home, and that average square footage as outlined in the building code, that determines an ERU. So that's an ERU. So if you go to a commercial property and they have a lot more impervious surface, so going back to that residential home, that residential home basically pretty much has your driveway and then your house on it. That's a residential impervious surface. Now, you can have residential units that put additional concrete and other things to change their impervious surface, and then their, the calculation might charge additional ERUs. But primarily, we see this on commercial and industrial. When you have a business and then you put in a large parking lot, which increases your amount of impervious surface, you have more discharge into the stormwater system. So typically, you'll see the ERUs charged more on the commercial and industrial side of the discharge, just because the amount of impervious surface they have. So the last time that an ERU rate was increased was May of twenty twenty-three, or twenty thirteen, excuse me. So recommendation is for the council to consider looking at a rate, rate increase there, going from four dollars to five dollars. That one dollar will produce a roughly hundred thousand dollars additional more in revenue for the stormwater fund and help relieve that deficit that it's running at, and then help sustain that forty percent fund balance as required by council. So this year, we're, we're also proposing a rate increase from that four dollar to that five dollar. It's been twelve years since we've addressed that. And then, very similar to the other departments, the increases in insurance, two and a half percent for the full-time employees. And again, that total revenue number on the budget overview of the five hundred and thirty thousand does not include passing the hundred thousand, or the rate increase, which is projected to be about a hundred thousand dollars. So right now, we're showing roughly fifty-five thousand dollar loss in stormwater without any rate adjustments. And I know that stormwater is a very debated item because, you know, residents are charged the, the flat fee, the four dollars, and that water discharged is from their home and goes somewhere. So it goes into the stormwater system. So just like your other enterprise funds, your waters and your sewers, they have a structure that's underneath the ground that they are unable to see, but that actually helps take that water away. In order to do projects and plan for these future items for addressing issues when they come up, or any of these intakes or stormwater features, they won't be maintained, we need to, we recommend increasing that utility rate as well.
Mr. Olson's gonna explain stormwater more in depth, probably about less than thirty minutes, and why we have to have it. But we've made some significant, I guess, roads into our stormwater, and, and, and all over the city for stormwater. It's, you know, we've used it for flood reduction, we've done a lot of previous papers we've done, and I know, I don't want to say another previous paper again, I say that, because it does a lot of maintenance that you put onto it, that you put with it. And then also, you have your rain gardens, all of those are gonna have some sort of maintenance necessary. We've had some, how old is our oldest one? It's older than what we, I mean, it's older than us here, so fifteen years, if not more. Mr. Olson, fifteen?
Thereabouts, yeah.
So fifteen years old, it's, it's life expectancy, it's gonna have to be redone. The funds from that stormwater fund are going to be the ones that have to be paid to update that stormwater feature.
Is there any way to encourage non-city entities to use more pervious materials? Would that help at all?
Honorable Mayor Council, Mayor Pro Tem, there is some ways you can do it on your residential, or, and, and Mr. Olson's gonna talk about this in, in a little bit, but there is another legislation that was passed last year that hindered what we can, I shouldn't say hindered, but it did not give us the, we are not allowed to use the same regulations that we have now, or that we've been in the past, that we can, we can use in the future. So I guess you're deregulating it a little bit, is maybe what I'm saying, so.
Okay.
It's complicated.
Yeah, I just think that any time that we can encourage-
Absolutely.
-people privately to use better materials to protect the stormwater system and to protect our lake, that we should try to do that.
Rain barrels are a good one if we were ever to get-
Get rain?
Yeah, that would be another way you can capture, in the state of Iowa, right now, you can capture the water and reuse it. I know other states don't allow you to do that, but here you can. You know, we've looked at like different types of soil remediation, different types of like practices that either a small business can, can do or a residential property owner can do as well.
Okay, the last enterprise self-supporting fund is the landfill. Landfill fee is not your garbage service, it is just the assessment applied by the solid waste commission on municipalities for use of the landfill. Right now, that rate is at eight dollars and fifty cents per month, per unit, per dwelling unit. So if you have a fourplex, you get four of those charges. If you have a single family home, you get one of those charges. Landfill fund, because it's primarily used to pay for that as, that assessment, is running at the council desired forty percent. Estimated revenues continue to be consistent around the five hundred and three thousand this year, slightly higher just due to the increased number of housing developments that they act, have actually had over the last year or so. Landfill assessments remain the same at thirty-four dollars per capita, and they're determined by the solid waste commission. So there is a deficit in there of forty thousand dollars, but as I mentioned, it is running at its, at the desired forty percent town, council desired fund balance, excuse me. So primary, primarily the expenses of that five hundred and forty-three are that landfill assessment. Pretty straightforward, they charge us and we kind of just pass that fee on.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Council and Mayor, we also use this one for community water cleanup as well. So before we go into proposed tax levies, the fun stuff, do you have any questions for Mr. Beckman, Mr. Ripke? I've got off light tonight.
Thank you.
So the proposed tax levy actually needs to be submitted to the county by March fifth each year, so that's why it's kind of first thing that we work on. The tax levies cannot be determined until the annual assessments are provided by the county, which are done around January first. So we have roughly five and a half weeks to get everything put together, to be considered and move forward. And that's what we're talking about, we're looking at rate increases like for insurance and those other things. We're looking fourteen to fifteen months out of what those projected costs could be, and we look at kind of the industry standards. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the total tax levy is there up, up top. It's a general fund levy as well as any of the other independent levies such as employee benefits, insurance, and your debt. So the biggest thing that changed is during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three legislative session, they passed House File seven eighteen. And I know that you guys have heard a lot about House File seven eighteen, but just a reminder, it combined, I think, there was roughly twenty-six total levies that were combined into one consolidated, consolidated general fund levy. Of those levies, the city of Storm Lake used two of them, the general fund, eight dollars and ten cent, and the twenty-seven cent emergency levy. That set our levy rate for general fund services at eight dollars and thirty-seven cents previously, prior to House File seven eighteen. So there you can see, twenty-three, twenty-four, we were at eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Last year, the current year that we're operating in, was the first year of House File seven eighteen and those limitations. We've gone from eight thirty-seven to this current year, we're charging eight dollars and twelve cents per thousand with that reduction. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six, due to growing at a rate of seven points, two point seven nine percent, we're restricted again by another percent. So we have reduced another, down, another eight cents down to the eight oh-four for year two for the House File seven eighteen. Over the last two years, that equates to about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars difference. The goal of House File seven eighteen was to bring all the levies back under the eight dollar and ten cent max over time. The new consolidated general fund levy reduces the levy combined levy rate of non-TIF taxable growth triggers are met or exceeded for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty to twenty-eight. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the limitations are zero to two point seven four percent, there is no change. Now, remember, I said we grew at two point seven nine percent. So we're within five one-hundreds of a percent because we grew between that two point seven five and the three point nine nine percent growth at one percent. So we have a one percent reduction again in our, our letting amount. Those limitations continue to go up two percent for four to six percent, and then three percent for anything above six percent. That one percent limitation just for this current year, going from the eight twelve to the eight oh-four is a thirty thousand dollar additional reduction in tax revenue for the general fund. Now, a reminder, your general fund, and we'll talk about, a lot about this on, on the March third meeting, but that's what pays for your public safety, that pays for your library, your parks, those types of departments, and that's what we'll be addressing on the March third. But we don't control that, the state sets those limitations, and that's what that levy rate is. So the consolidated general fund levy for fiscal year twenty-six is subject to eight point zero four five dollars per thousand in valuation. Are any questions on the impacts of House File?
So when we talk about growth, what goes under growth?
So non-TIF taxable value, so the assessed value, if that is increased, and then you have your rollbacks that are put on those, that are set by the state. So like this year was a forty-seven percent on residential property. So you take your assessed value, roll back by forty percent, forty-seven percent, and whatever that taxable amount- And whatever that taxable amount, that growth for the citywide. Now you have your ten percent on, rollbacks on commercial and industrial right now. As well as the other factors that House File seven eighteen put into play, but I don't want to get that confused right now, but if we're just looking at residential. We're looking at that assessed value, less that rollback percentage, and the total increase from that dollar amount for all the residential. Commercial and industrial properties in Storm Lake grows by two point seven nine percent. I think last year we grew twelve percent. As a reference. So going on, the, the next one is the insurance levy. Um, the insurance levy covers, um, your personal property, or the property, general property insurance of the, of the city and the liability insurance. That's what's expected to increase by two, ten point two percent, very similar to what you saw in the enterprise fund as well. So that rate goes from thirty-one cents to sixty-eight cents, um, for the next fiscal year. The employee benefits levy, the employee benefits levy is the cost of benefits offered to city employees. The benefits include FICA, IPRs, community fire police retirement system of Iowa, um, life insurance, disability insurance, health, dental and vision insurance as well. Proposed tax levy, you can kind of see it's, was right around two dollars and eighty-one cents. Um, and then here in, from twenty-four to twenty-five, we saw an increase to four point four three percent. Now on the next two pages, um, after, after this one, I put some graphs on there. If you flip the page over, so you can kind of see the trends on how those, they've begun. So you can see the general fund levy, how we're at the eight thirty-seven and how that is trending downward. The next graph there is the tax levy, um, that's your total tax levy, you can kind of see where your liability, your police, um, fire, retirement. FICA, debt, everything kind of has been leveling there, and you saw that spike last year for that benefits levy. That's because on the next page, um, you kind of see what we've been seeing, as you asked, um, earlier. That was, and making on about increased claims of insurance, so we did have a reserve fund balance, um, that were, were used up. So when we were setting these levy rates previously, under the previous administration, they kind of planned to use up some of those. And then the next one, you see the increased cost of claims have actually gradually gone up higher than, um, what was expected. So that's how come you see this year's, uh, increase in that insurance levy again. So a combination of using up some of those reserves, as well as those increased claims, has kind of gotten us to the point where. Um, the levy rate for those insurance benefits have increased. Don't have as, as significant of an increase from fiscal year to twenty-five. Um, we don't have an increase from twenty-five to twenty-six as we did from twenty-four to twenty-five, but there's still an increase there. So the employee health benefits did increase nine point zero three percent, and three percent for, uh, life, disability, dental, and vision insurance. Whereas the IPRs and community fire, police retirement are projected to remain the same for the next fiscal year. Are any questions on the employee benefits or the charts? Of kind of how we started with the reserve and over the last few years with the claims, we spent that down. And then, uh, the last levy rate that we use is the bond, um, and debt service levy. So previous fiscal year, we were at seventy-two cents, and as discussed, when we were looking at the fire truck, the proposed fire truck. Um, I think we estimated at the time it was like sixty-four cents per thousand. It ends up being a, uh, fifty-eight cent, um, increase to the, uh, proposed tax levy for fiscal year twenty-six. And then also a reminder, this is, this one year, we have both the last payment of the old fire truck and the first payment of the new one. So that's even slightly increased now due to that, and that old one will be dropping off, um, come fiscal year twenty-seven.
What are you saving though, by doing that?
Six hundred thousand dollars.
I was good, I was gonna ask if there was any good news.
I was gonna say, yes, I was gonna say, by doing this one-year increase, you know, council, you have to look at the fiduciary responsibility of property tax. You're saving your property taxpayers six hundred thousand dollars over the course of that bond.
I know it's a lot of numbers and a lot of information in a very complicated situation, and if you want to sit down and talk about House File seven eighteen, I'd happily.
And and we're gonna talk about more that, uh, more of that on the March third meeting.
Well, I mean, it's in effect, so we can talk about it, but it's not going away.
It's not gonna go away, but there's going to be discussions and, um, we're just gonna share what we're seeing and what the trends are. Specifically for our community, our growing community, I should say.
I mean, basically, the way, and this might be too simplistic, but. You know, we are a growing community, we want to be a growing community, and the more you grow, the more you have a consequence, instead of the opposite, so it's unfortunate.
The House File seven eighteen limitations are specifically geared to, geared toward limiting that growth that you can capture. And not to prelude the next meeting, but if you look at that first chart, the general fund levy.
There's no previews tonight. There's like not what we're, what is it, the, you know, previews for our next.
It's like a trailer.
I wanted to leave a really bad movie.
A cliffhanger.
Coming events.
A cliffhanger, that's not the one. All joking aside, I appreciate everybody's work on the enterprise fund again. Money's still tight here, even though you have rates to work with, but, you know, when we consciously look at increasing rates. We want to make sure that everybody's getting a value, and that we're providing the, the best service possible, and also looking in the future. Um, because we just don't want to say willy-nilly to come to you and say, yeah, we need to increase ten, fifteen, twenty percent. Because we know that's gonna hurt our, our customers, we know that, um, we just want to do smart budgeting. And I appreciate your comment earlier about the sewer rate, yeah, I think that's one that we're definitely gonna have to discuss further.
I think it's also important to note on the, on the debt, I, I had a couple, um, people in the community talk to me about, about our debt in, in the community. But as you can see, our debt has actually dropped over the last, um. Four or five years, continues to, to drop down, although the fire, um, truck this year will bump it for one, for one year. But we are on a trend of going down on, on our, on our city debt, so, um. The person didn't believe me on that, when I told him that, until I provided some of the data for him, so. He was much more appreciative with how fiscally responsible some of us have been over the, over the last few years, and our, and our financial departments have worked hard to refinance those, and. And that's, um, fantastic.
Even before then, looking back to twenty-one and even to twenty, that these numbers were even higher than what's, what's on there as well, I think. When we, when you started, you said it was like.
It was over ninety percent.
And we've been very diligent, been very diligent over the years trying to refinance those, those bonds and stuff to get low rates to save our taxpayers. Um, as much money as we can on, on the debt, anyway.
Yeah, refinancing and, and payouts brought down to like sixty-eight percent.
Correct, yep.
The last few pages on this, um, are just the existing fee resolution. Um, so these are the fees that was previously passed by council that we are implementing. So it's because we didn't have any rating, proposed rate increases for the water sewer side, it's just a, uh. Document for your records to see this is kind of where we're at, um, that's readily available for you. Again, when we come back, when we start looking at general fund, um, there will most likely be some proposed fee increases which are outlined in this fee resolution. But we didn't have any of those for water sewer, uh, storm water, because those fees will be passed by ordinance coming up.
So we'll discuss these on the, uh, March third meeting, so if you want to review those. We will have some proposed fees, uh, proposed fee increases on some of these line items.
Do we compare these with similar cities?
We do. Uh, not to go, I, I can't speak right now for everybody, but I presume a lot of us are looking at our fees. And having the same discussion that we're having here, um, with our, our council and stuff.
Some of them seem pretty cheap.
I know the weather doesn't, you know, fact, it would factor into a visit, I'd like to get out to the airport as a group.
Absolutely. We can arrange that.
Once over zero.
Next week.
Maybe next week.
Mr. Gibbons is our airport liaison, he can make sure that happens.
I'll get it on the schedule, as weather allows.
Alright, any questions on what was presented? For, um, enterprise fund? Tax levy, fee resolution, well, again, not much on the fee resolution, because we're not proposing any fee changes for, um, enterprise fund. Alright, so on March third, um, again, we're probably gonna be here a lot longer going through all of the other budgets, it's gonna just follow in similar capacities as we did this evening. We're gonna delve into, um, House File seven eighteen a little bit more, and looking at, you know, your, um, your program funding, really. So with that, we have no other questions.
The only other one that I wanted to add on, uh, the proposed tax levy on here, the reason why we wanted to do it earlier is because it is due to the county by March fifth, like I mentioned. And just waiting until the third would kind of just not leave much time, but you're also gonna have your own standalone public hearing council meeting for that. On March, up to April seventh. So it'll have, if by House File seven eighteen, we have to have our own standalone meeting with just the proposed tax levy. After the mailer from the county goes out, but before the budget's approved, right that.
You have that.
Window.
Tight window.
Tight windows.
Yep, so.
So typically what we've done on, um, is have them, well, typically we've only done it once. Um, is had it the same night as a city council meeting and just set it for four thirty.
And I'll prepare that for the county.
You won't, you won't see much change from tonight to today, April, April seventh.
Alright, anything else?
I already have that though, thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you.
Keep that roll.
Well, we'll move on to the next item, which is a work session discussion of post-construction control ordinance updates, and Scott Olson is going to brief it.
Council, Pro Tem, so what we have here is, uh, just to kind of give you a brief overview, the post-construction control ordinance is in relationship, and we have new construction on larger properties. Um, we have them all over town, some you see, some you don't. Um, for example, the new case that was put in that's got stormwater controls, they're underneath the concrete, we don't see it, and they want to maximize their hard surface area. And they want to use, uh, uh, remaining green space, or they don't want to take up anymore of their, uh, hard surface allotment that they had to. So they did that the way they did at McDonald's, that was an earlier version of how they did things, they have little detention basins on scattered, they're. We drive through the drive-through, all those little basins with the flowers, those are stormwater detention basins, and, uh, Quick Stars was another example, where they have one very large basin. They've also got smaller areas that everything ends up going to the large basin on the, uh, north side of the property. And so the whole goal of this is, it's mandated by DNR and EPA, and so, um. The whole idea is you're trying to regulate the amount of runoff that's generated from new construction, um, onto the city streets and therefore to the city storm sewers. You think about it, um, the more hard surface we have, the more stormwater generates. Um, the problem lies in that we don't, you, you can't really increase the size of the storm sewer system unless you start all the way at the lake. You can put a bigger pipe that gets the water faster off your property, but the pipe downstream that creates a bottleneck, so then the water floods and comes up above the surface out of the storm sewer. So unless you want to go all the way to the lake and start with bigger pipes and come all the way back, it's quite expensive, so. The idea is to try and control the amount of runoff generated by newer hard surfaces and also clean that water before it goes into the lake or the creek north of town. And so, um, what I did with the, the post-construction control ordinance was, the state of Iowa made changes in the regulations and how we enforce the star, stormwater runoff. Um, namely, the, it's, the whole system that's very complicated, that's why an engineer has to develop these for each, each products, each project's gonna be different, just because the sizes vary. Topography and the site varies, and, um, how they go about, um, complying with the regulations is gonna vary, there's lots of options, like in, in the case, it was. It's all under, under the slab, some of them use soil, soil remediation where they, you know, issue we have in Storm Lake is, don't have a whole lot of, uh, sand. And we, you know, so if water goes through the black, uh, topsoil, once it's that clay layer, it's not gonna go any further, really. And so then you, you can try and alleviate that a bit by ripping deeper into the soil and adding compost, and that way it, it allows for more. Water to stay on site rather than running off, so the whole goal would be to try and re, you know, re, get that water back into the water table, but. We have limitations based on the kind of soils we have available to us, so, um, therefore, when a new project starts, whether it be a Quick Star, McDonald's, or a Casey's. The engineer looks at the site, and the, the developer or the owner has their way of wanting to do that, and so based on the size of the area that's there, the topography. How they approach that's gonna vary from one to the other, and our ordinance doesn't dictate that you have to do it a certain way, as long as the end result is that the runoff meets the, uh, regulations and our ordinance, and, you know, and again. Very simply, you know, the runoff before and after doesn't change, but the state did was, they regulated the amount of rainfall that you can, uh, try and control. And that, not all cities are doing this the same, some are more restrictive than others, um, the state is basically trying to make it more of a level playing field, I believe. Um, so they, they try to regulate how much rainfall you can, uh, design for. Also, um, they want the post-construction control to kind of match with the, uh, the, uh, SWIP rules as far as when we just do general constructions, something called general permit number two, which regulates. Why they're under construction, how you keep solar erosion happening, is generally speaking, you take off all the tops, or, excuse me, all the grass, so it's all exposed dirt. So when you see the fences and the big tubes of straw out there, that's what, that's just trying to control during construction, after construction, that's when the post-construction control kicks in. There's a, there's a section there about preserving topsoil, though, so, uh, they wanted that put into our ordinance where it talks about. So if you have X amount of black dirt in the site, when you're all said and done, that you should have the same amount of black topsoil that was there before, and the area's in not hard surface, so. And the last thing would be, let's consult, consider the preconditions, and so the way ordinance is written currently, um, we can use the Quick Star as a good example of them. That, that site was previous to develops, there's lots of buildings and gravel and concrete, and so. Before the project was, uh, taken over by Quick Star, they were generating a certain amount of runoff base, because you think about it, um, grass is, you know, soaking some of the water, and the surface isn't gonna run off as much water. As if you had a hard surface like concrete, when the water hits concrete, it's gonna shed off and make its way out to the street. Under our current ordinance, the precondition that we, the designer would look at, even though the Quick Star site had all these buildings, all these hard surfaces on there. You were supposed to consider that whole site to be a meadow, like, there's grass, and so that's pretty restrictive when you think about it, so, um. So what they want you to do now is basically you gotta consider that the conditions exist as they are right now, so that you're not penalizing somebody and, and make them take it all the way back to when it was. Basically a farm field, or now you have a farm field, a meadow with grass, and so what we, what I want to do is redo our ordinance to. And so what we, what I want to do is redo our ordinance to obviously, um, reflect what the state has us do because if we, we can go ahead and be more restrictive than what the state, uh, these minimum regulations they want. Our problem is if we do that, then the difference between compliance with the state's, uh, maximum allowable rules and what we want to do, we have to pay the difference of the city. So we don't want to do that. So, and we don't want to be out of, out of, uh, not competitive with other cities either. That's always one of those things. We try to make sure we follow the rules. Obviously, we want to do that and we're compelled to do that. But we don't want to, uh, be overboard where it's more expensive to develop here than it is in a joining property or in joining area. So we want to follow the rules, but we want to make sure we're trying to maintain our competitiveness with other cities. And I thought this is an opportune time. Why we're doing is to comply with state regulations. The ordinance needed a lot of work as far as editing and, and cleaning things up. So we had recommendations from, um, a couple of our engineers. Um, and so I went through and cleaned up a lot of the language and tried to make it more streamlined. It's very complicated to read through the document as it is right now, even for an engineer. There's things that, you know, weren't really, uh, one, one section would say one thing, another section would say the other thing. So it was very confusing about which one you're supposed to do to comply. So I tried to, based on what the engineers' recommendations were and, uh, and just feedback I've had over the years, I took off the stuff that, that didn't really apply and wasn't necessary and then tried to make things more simplified. Example would be that we had it set up and every you had to have a, a pre-development meeting and a, and have a concept plan. And then you had to have a final plan. Well, uh, like one engineer said, you're really doubling up on things and it makes it, this takes longer. So the process is lengthy enough without adding more hurdles in there to get through it. It didn't really, it didn't really function when we thought it should. So it made no sense. We took that out. And so the regulations that we're complying with are there, but it's going from A to B is a lot more straightforward, more simplified. So the more complicated you make things, the more expensive it is. So, um, we, we don't need hurdles. We want compliance, but we don't need to make it harder than it has to be. So, so what I gave you was an example of the existing ordinance. And I gave you the one with all the strike throughs and all that, so you can at least see what I did. And then one clean version, so you can at least review it. It makes more sense that way to review it. So currently, our legal, uh, team is reviewing and also our, uh, stormwater engineers review. I just want to make sure we do this right and, uh, we're in compliance. That's my main goal. And also making sure that this doesn't adversely affect us as far as funding later for different projects. I want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do and, uh, making compliance. But making sure if there's something we need to do that would help us out as far as funding, that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot. So that's what I did. So once I get the report back from, you know, legal and from the engineers, uh, whatever changes they require, I'll make that. Then we'll have a ready for the final version that's to review and approve.
Don't want to go to stormwater jail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that's, uh, everything. Um, we'll have an entertaining, or I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By Councilperson Ramos. Seconded by Councilperson Martinez. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion's carried. We are adjourned.
Alright, thank you.